Opened on July fifteenth. Public hearing continuances were on August nineteenth, September sixteenth, October twenty-first, December second, and December sixteenth. There were continuances. Uh, for those in the audience and those on television, my name is John Weiss. Next to me to the left.
George Morse.
Jim Robinson.
John O'Connell.
Elizabeth Mitchell.
Keith Baker.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
And so the, um, the first order of business is to review, not this. We're reviewing the, the May twenty-fifth or the?
The, the May twenty-fifth.
May twenty-fifth.
The eleventh is not done yet.
And, and the motion which was made by George about approving the May fourth meeting was inappropriate because George was not here. So we have to rescind this by a vote and then we have to re-motion this issue, so.
So my name would be in the minutes still.
Your name would be in the, in the minutes, but you were not, you were not permitted to?
Well, I made the motion now.
You can't do the made motion. So can, can I have a motion to rescind?
I move to rescind the approval of the minutes for May?
Fourth.
Fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, can I have a second?
You rescind the vote.
Rescind the vote.
Vote.
Rescind the vote.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now?
And then I now?
No, you, you can. Can you?
I can because I was here.
Right.
I move to accept the minutes as written for May fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
And you second it?
Second.
And John will second. And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is taken care of.
And then, um, acceptance of the May ele- uh, May twenty-fifth.
And?
I move to?
As amended, as, I'm not sure if you do it as amended or?
Got it, got it.
I move to accept the minutes from Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, sixteen, as, as amended.
Uh, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, right?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Don't throw us those curveballs. Okay, Mr. Cameron, uh, with Mr. True, uh, come on forward and, or do you have a board that you want to put up and?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I think, just sorry, I think for the sake of appearances, I'm going, should I move?
Well, I don't think you'd have to.
I think you should, I think you should.
Yes.
Yeah.
But she can participate, she just can't vote. That's my understanding.
Well, as an, as a party in interest, I think it's, I think it's cleaner.
Okay.
You can?
But you can ask questions.
Sorry, I want to be able to see.
But you can ask questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, right. Go ahead.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'm short notice and formally, Adam Lauren, your son Henry, you're here. My name is Scott Cameron. I'm at the Moore and Cameron Group. We're helping them with a subdivision proposal.
Can you pull the mic over?
Okay. So again, Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group, uh, we're civil engineering consultants. And we're helping the Trues with a subdivision proposal of High Road and it's three lots. I'm going to be very brief and give you kind of the reason why we're here and what we're hoping to do is open it up for some feedback from you, uh, and, uh, as we, as we get into kind of design development, put together the formal application. So this is an existing property with, it's a, kind of an apartment in a barn, right on the frontage. It's, it's an older structure, but in good structural condition. The Trues have purchased the property and there's an existing curb cut, a driveway in here that was permitted through MAST DOT and built several years back. And what we would like to do here is extend a new subdivision road onto the property to preserve the existing barn as it is now. One new house lot here, kind of in line with the houses that are on High Road already. And then the Trues would like to build their house in the back of the property. And it's only three lots, I say that because, you know, with full subdivision road and zoning forty thousand square foot, uh, this could be a four, possibly five lot subdivision. He has no interest in that. What he would like to do is do a very modest road, a gravel road, something that is going to match and blend in with what is in this neighborhood with the, with the specific intent of preserving the agricultural use in the property. Uh, it's mowed now, it's haved, and we think we can achieve that and preserve almost in its entirety, uh, the field that's there now. Uh, we preserve the frontage of the property by keeping the house there, trees, screening, and this, this dwelling on this lot would be in keeping with what is going down the road now, with some of the newer construction and older construction. Uh, and then the house obviously back here, we set well back, screened and mostly invisible from the road. Uh, so why are we here? Well, we don't want to do a full subdivision road. We don't want a full strip pavement. We don't want to do sidewalks, we don't want to do curbing. We want to keep this more in the simple nature, a twenty-foot gravel road with a paved exit only at the entrance here, just for tracking coming out onto the road. Uh, but still a turnaround here that would accommodate the Newbury Fire Truck apparatus, uh, so there wouldn't be an emergency vehicle. It's five hundred feet in length, so the, the dead end length is acceptable. Uh, really what we're looking at is waivers requesting for a reduction in roadway width, construction standard, um, use of country drainage. Uh, what we have designed here, um, is, I see a crowned gravel road coming down and there would be swells. The natural topography of the property comes down this way and by just adding a very soft berm, about a foot high, along the property boundary, we can use natural topography to trap and infiltrate any stormwater that's coming across there, also obviously pick up any water coming down across the hill this way and put it to the ground. We've done soil testing, sandy material. We think we can do that and have what effectively is an invisible stormwater management system that can still be haved as it is today, but functional. Uh, the house, uh, the Trues' house would be in the back part here, I treat it back. We're not approaching any wetlands, buffer zones, which we had delineated. Uh, there would be some clearing up from trees here, but kind of tucked in and some ability to preserve some of the trees on the boundary here, obviously along that edge there, uh, which is off-site, that wouldn't all be touched, so. Uh, we're hoping to present this to you, get some initial feedback on the concept as we move forward, uh, in engineering these drawings. It's just an eighty scale black and white of the same, uh, but it's a, you know, again, it's a very modest proposal, uh, reducing the total number of lots, not trying to jam it in there in preservation of as much open space as possible. And that's, uh, that's what I have for you tonight, so.
Could you flip it over again?
Sure can.
Any of you guys have any questions?
Yeah, is the blue a wetland now or is it a BMP eventually?
It's a BMP, so what we did, I'll, I'll bring this over so you can see it a little better. So you can see, you can see this contour?
Yeah.
Coming around here, right? See that contour, that shape?
Yeah.
I'll just flip it back over.
That's it?
It's the contour.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're just catching the, the contour of the field. We don't want to excavate it, we don't want to change it at all. We just want to add a very soft berm along the edge so the water doesn't keep sheeting across.
Is this a wet, this is not wetland?
It's not, no.
Okay. It will become a infiltration facility. What's the soil like there?
Sand.
Huh?
It's sand, coarse sand.
Yeah.
I did soil testing actually out there yesterday. We dug a number of soil, uh, test holes out there and it's sand coming up all the way back until you get to, there's a high point here and as you start to get beyond that, it changes to more of a silty material, but everything from about here forward is all sand, coarse, coarse sand.
Joe?
Go ahead.
Um, in, in keeping with what, what is there now, so there's a barn and it looks like there's, um, a buffer zone of trees around that and then there'll be a home, right? So, so now you're, you're trying to create the existing home look. Is there, and I can see there's a buffered tree planting in front.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any design to plant trees, buffer trees on the backside and along the, uh, that would be?
Yeah, back up, we haven't engineered that and, and obviously, um, we have, we have the butter here with us tonight. Uh, no, but, uh, we did set the driveway off the lot line a little bit to allow plenty of room to landscape along that edge as needed.
I was more, I was talking more about the house.
Around in this area?
Yeah.
We haven't put it on the plan. There, there would be some customization to the house lot design here, uh, what that eventually looks like. Uh, what we were focusing on is as the road, we didn't want a straight road coming in. We made this a little, um, serpentine, allowing us some room to put screening on this side adjacent to that house. Uh, Adam's been reaching out to everybody, uh, you know, communicating with the neighbors and, and, uh, Martha was gracious enough to take us in, uh, last week for an informal meeting as well. Screening between, you know, this house and that house, we've put, we've shown out on the plan here. And, but again, I think not putting in trees for portionance would help with the, with the mowing, the hang part of it. So we're trying to, we're trying to keep as much of that as open as possible.
Is this haved also?
That's Elizabeth's.
That's actually?
That's Elizabeth's.
Yeah. Um, and it is haved right now. Um, it's, because that whole lot is all open, so it's one contiguous, it looks like one contiguous field. There's nothing, there's a couple trees here and there that sort of will indicate where the property line is, but it's, it's currently open.
Is this the White House with the twin chimneys, uh?
Uh, no.
No.
Do you have water on the road up there?
Right on the road there.
No.
Yeah, that one here, this is the White House.
Yeah, that's next to Glenn, Glenn's house.
I have been working with a, a landscape person and working on my own ideas too. With, uh, Adam True.
Adam True and address, okay?
My name's Adam True and, um, I'm just trying to show you what we're thinking about doing here. We're two, looking at doing probably some sort of, uh, buffer here with, uh, black pine, uh, river birch and I think there was a blue spruce, uh, kind of staggered around. And something in the middle there too as well. And the road is probably going to be slid over a little bit like this, so that we have one continuous parcel here with more trees in here, trees here, not as linear as this though. Um, so there'd be kind of a sweeping buffer here and a little bit of an edge buffer here. And then in the center. And then trees here.
Adam, sorry, where is the flagpole now? I'm just having?
The flagpole right now is right, it's, uh?
You can see it on there.
It's right there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, um, and then as this comes along here against Elizabeth's drive, um, we were going to do some planting, sort of staggered along here, some evergreens and deciduous trees to screen from headlights. And that's what we get this here for too as well, for headlights to screen against the Kennedys. Um, I will say that I spoke with Dave Kennedy the other day and when we talked about sliding this road to make this a small continuous parcel of ours, he expressed interest in perhaps cutting the line off like this and taking this piece of land in trade for us getting a parcel of land back here, which, um, when he, when he approached me about it, I had thought about it a while ago, you know, because this is much more usable land for us than, than this is here. And he was really excited to perhaps get some width to his lot and not such a linear area in the front. So when this is slid over, we may take a line right here and cut it off the circle and do an exchange of land here or a parcel back here.
Would? When you, I, I see the blue and I understand it's not wetland, but I understand it's contour. Is there any benefit in moving your driveway to the north?
So?
Your driveway.
Put it in the lower corners of areas.
And what's, what's the cost benefit on that?
It's more of a practicality. We, we put it at the high point, uh, the water's all going to want to come down to this area. We didn't want to use the road as a dam, put it down along this edge and it would keep this, you know, one way or the other.
So you'd have a little, you'd have some engineering to do?
Yeah, yeah, so it, you know, with gravel driveways, we didn't want it, you know, you can see this driveway's on the high side, this driveway's on the high side, that driveway, it's, we were trying to keep it on the high side a lot instead of in the low spot. Um, that's the general thinking behind that. And we would have to, we would lose, you know, the natural storage area down there for, for any stormwater off, which quite frankly, I, I would be highly surprised if you ever saw anything flowing across the property with the ace soil that's out there, but nonetheless, we still have to, uh, show something.
And then just show me again the three lots. I see the first one, I think I see the second one. But, and their sizes. The first one is on the road.
Yep. So that's?
Lot one.
That's lot one. Forty thousand square feet, forty thousand square feet.
And then everything else is?
Everything else eleven plus.
And, and it only goes back to where it's green? I thought the lot actually went back, yeah.
All the way back. Yeah.
That, see the highlighter?
We're sort of looking to put our house in that green area. I actually think it might be slid back a little bit further, uh, because we'd like to keep some of the trees up along this edge here and then just thin these trees, leaving the nice oak trees. Most of it's locust and cherry. Kind of move the house back more about right there, um, so that we've kind of get like a, a screen between the field a little bit.
Yeah, but I think you're, you're saying all the right things in terms of the screening, in terms of the plan that you said you had as the landscape architect, but obviously people like yourself who want a house like this, you want your own privacy and your own ability to?
Part of it, yeah.
Not, not intrude on other people and respecting other people, the Kennedys and, and Elizabeth makes a lot of sense to us and I expect you to come back with a landscape plan that'll demonstrate that kind of screening as part of your plan. And then, I know you said this, but I want to just affirm it. You're going to have pavers just as you came in off the street or is it, or is it blacktop?
It would probably be, we're not, we're not decided on yet.
You don't know yet?
But what?
Hard, hard skate.
Some sort of hard skate. The idea would be we don't want any dirt tracking. If this is a gravel road, we want a good pad so that it tracks a little bit.
And then your, your gravel begins maybe forty feet in or something like that?
Yeah, about fifty feet in, fifty to a hundred feet. I think we're, we're targeting somewhere around a hundred feet max.
And in the cul-de-sac itself, you're, you're looking for twenty-foot width of gravel and then the other are, are simply the, the berms that we would require for the country drainage?
Yeah, it would, so the shoulder, the road would come off, then a crown in the center, this is the center line of the road. You'd have a slight shoulder here and then it would drop off into a swell.
Yeah, right.
It's exaggerated, but it would come off on the side.
I, the dimensions for the cul-de-sac, the road radii and the property line, are they per the subdivision rules or are you looking for a, a waiver?
We're looking for a waiver on that and the reason being is that we can engineer this so that the Newbury Fire Truck can, this is how that's designed right now. So we have turning analysis software. We plug in the, the truck?
Yeah.
It models the actual truck so it can turn around. This is plenty big enough to accommodate the truck, but it's a hundred ten foot diameter from here to here instead of a hundred sixty-five, which is what it's, so it's substantially smaller footprint. If you picture something that's, you know, fifty percent bigger than this here, it would just be?
So I assume, I assume that Nate hasn't seen this yet?
Did you, we, we talked about that, did you?
The fire chief?
I, I don't think that's going to fly.
Just on current information, that was it.
It may not. I mean, I, I think it's some of the, I mean, I have one, I mean, I'm almost in a butter and I've got a cul-de-sac that's, you know, you know, built for the ages. I mean, I, it, it seems way overbuilt to me, but that's just what I've got.
Well, the, historically, the fire department has been adamant about the numbers that we have in the subdivision rules, which is why they're the numbers.
Definitely.
Naturally. Um, so I think, I personally wouldn't want to be, uh, representing you and trying to talk them into something smaller. If you can, fair enough, but, um, I'd be surprised if they're going to bend on this. But I'd be, I'm wrong most of the time anyway, so.
Me too.
Well, we did, we did talk about that when we met.
Yeah.
You warned him that?
Yes.
That's an issue.
Yeah, we, we, it's one of our next dots. We wanted to, we're kind of going through the board first and we wanted to go start reaching out to staff.
Well, we have one that slipped through the crack before I was on the board and I've been on the board six years now and I haven't stopped hearing about it. I'm still hearing about it, not only from the fire department, but from the, uh, the highway department.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they got plow issues.
Right, well, this, so this would remain a private road.
Pardon?
This would remain a private road, so Adam would take care of all the plowing.
Well, it's, wait a second, this cul-de-sac is not private, right?
Yeah.
It would, it would remain private, yeah.
The cul-de-sac is private.
Yeah, well, this, yeah, the cul-de-sac would remain private.
Oh, okay.
And then, and then the driveway off of that.
Yeah, okay, the driveway I assume was private, the cul-de-sac.
And we, you know, we, we will schedule a meeting with the fire.
Where's all the frontage coming from?
Where else is what?
This would be, this would be a new private way. So your frontage for this lot would still remain on the, on the, on the High Road and then on the new road.
Sure.
This lot would be on the new road and then Adam's lot, Adam Lauren's lot would be on the balance of this.
Oh, private as opposed to, I'm sorry.
So we wouldn't, after this was built, we would not come back?
Private, you're not going to give it to the town?
Right.
And you will be plowing it yourself.
That's right.
And you'll be putting together homeowners association, maintenance agreements and all of that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And what's the distance between that, let's call it a driveway then, or the road, the private road and the Kennedys driveway?
We're still, uh, so right now it touches, it kisses the line on a tangent right there.
No, no, I'm more, uh, uh, at Route one A.
Oh, Route one A. It's the, the curb cuts, this is, there's an apron there now and we're coming right into it. So this is one of the waivers we're requesting is so we don't have to do a return radius on this, it just comes into the corner there.
Comes in straight?
To make use of that existing apron that's right here.
And so you're a hundred and twenty-five feet or so or what? From his driveway?
Uh, well, this is, uh, this is an eighty scale plan and I'd say we have about a hundred feet there between the two.
What is required, Martha? What's required? Between?
Between the road and the driveway?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that we have any requirements.
Any requirement?
There's a road to road, jog.
Right, there's a thirty, yeah, three hundred foot road to road, if you had a through street, it's three hundred feet.
I, it was driveway to driveway, there's nothing, but I was just curious if it was road to driveway? No?
I don't think, not, not that I can think of.
Okay.
And this curb cut here was permitted through the state, so we actually went through and got his curb cut access permit.
And, um, are you developing all three?
Yeah.
So you'll, you'll be the builder for the, on a spec basis for the second one?
Uh, yes, the only one that will be spec'd will be the second one. The front barn, which is a different parcel, will remain in our ownership.
And you're using that for?
For ownership and rental.
Right. So the only really house that's being built, not for you, is the middle one?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Scott, on the, by the definitive subdivision wording on the right-hand side, that paragraph next to it, has that been changed to Newbury, Town of Newbury? Okay.
Martha got me on that too.
Yeah, all right.
Who knows? Uh, yeah, we have a, just a template with the registry blocks on there. This is, uh, was actually updated on the other plans, but not this one.
I think Martha was saying too, they have twenty-two footies now, the new Dobbs Road instead of twenty?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, twenty, twenty is the state fire marshal.
Twenty-two.
Minimum width.
Right, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is, that's our new subdivision.
Yeah. Would you be looking for the twenty-two on this as opposed to the twenty?
Well, that was one of the waivers you were.
It's one of the waivers. You want to go from twenty-two to twenty.
Yeah, twenty-two is, again, you know, they go on the basis of the mirror to mirror width of a fire, piece of fire apparatus. And, uh, you know, traditionally, the fire chief wins all the arguments, you know, he just?
It does. Public safety trumps everything.
So, message is, you gotta go and talk to the fire department about most of these waivers, because almost all of them have to do with?
Yeah, you should be talking to Nate soon, I would think.
Yeah, I think you should do that as soon as possible because the cul-de-sac width, the width of the road are really, uh, the things that he's going to be most concerned with.
Their, their requirements, I don't think are unreasonable, you know. They're going to use that cul-de-sac if there's a, a fire in the first house, forget where Adam lives. Um, and they then not going to want to back a ladder truck out onto, onto a high road. They want to, want to turn around and they want to turn around without, you know, climbing the curb.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, we've talked a lot in the, over the past few years about, we never gotten around to doing it, but a separate, far simpler set of rules and regulations for subdivisions that are, that are this size, a two Z's, three Z's and four Z's. Because they, clearly, you shouldn't be putting people through what you put them through if it's a twenty-five lot subdivision. The, uh, the requirements just aren't there for that strictness. But I think we'd have to, we're going to have to talk about the pavement. The widths before you spend money on the, uh, on the preliminary plan, I would suggest you talk to Nate, see where his head is. And, um, and James Surratt, the highway superintendent. I mean, they're both very reasonable people, but, you know, they've got, they've got a job to do also.
Um, let's presume whatever we come to you with is acceptable to fire, DPW, police, we, we do that, that legwork. Granting of waivers in the interest of a, a development that we, we think better fits the neighborhood, is the, is the board's general temperament in favor of that or?
Well, I don't think we have a general temperament because we've not been asked it before. So I think we just have to talk it through as a group and see what we think about it. And I, I don't need to put you off, we just haven't, we don't have history on it.
Yep.
So we don't have a temperament.
The waivers that we can grant that don't really affect other departments are in one category.
Right.
The ones that where other departments have imparted to us their requirements, that's something else, you know?
Yeah, we do have precedent for waivers on road construction. We've had gravel roads, I think it was before any of you guys were on the board. But?
I mean, as long as, I mean, I don't mind saying as long as you're plowing and not having the town plow, taking that responsibility, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't personally have a problem with gravel.
I don't, I think it looks nice.
I've got no problem with that.
And it's a, it's a, you know, it's, uh, it's good in terms of stormwater, you know?
I'd say he's got all the BMPs in the world there.
Right.
I doubt, I doubt if there's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the element of percible material anyway, the water is not going to stay there I mean, it's the element of percible material, anyway, the water is not gonna stay there more than a millisecond or two. It's gonna be out of there in no time.
Yeah.
Go straight down. The ultimate water flows downhill.
Yeah, we had a downpour the other day when digging the test pits.
Was that Adam?
We had a big downpour the other day when they were doing the test pits. It was dry right out.
Oh, yeah.
As soon as it finished.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole high stra, high road, uh, the whole high road ridge is that way, it's really super absorbent soil.
Jim, anything? No?
When do you expect we'll see a preliminary plan?
We're gonna meet with fire and DPW, and we're gonna get back in here as soon as we can.
Yeah, okay.
It was our, you know, it's our hope to maybe get this started this year.
Do anyone else they should talk to before they get to drawing?
Well, he's done his test pits, so what they've done, you've talked to health, right, or you got to?
Yep.
Uh, I, I know that most people have decent water, uh, in this area. Although the, closer to high road, you don't do as well, but you'll be okay, it's from everything we're told. In the back, you'll, you'll be okay.
Well, in the front right now is, yeah, really hard, a lot of iron, a lot of calcium.
Yeah, right, right, so I... But you don't need to talk, I mean, that's just, you're the, you wanna do that ahead of time on your own, you know.
What do you, your, uh?
I don't know.
You don't have?
I, we have a well, I don't know.
Oh, no, okay.
Do you have any questions, Ms.?
No, I'm good.
Elizabeth?
I do, I have a couple.
Okay.
Elizabeth Mitchell, 255 High Road. I might have questions to you, okay? So, Scott, um, Adam was kind enough to afford a plan to us earlier in the week, and one of the things that I noticed when, the difference was, the plan you afforded had the driveways being 16 feet wide, but now it's 20. Is there a reason for that?
We're, well, what we're struggling, we need...
And by that, I mean this, that we're coming off the cul-de-sac.
So the, the state fire marshal's office regulations require a 20-foot minimum driveway width. And what we need to do is go meet with fire, obviously, if we can do 16, if we can do 12, we'll do that.
Yep.
But we need to go meet with fire, again, and clarify what, what he's gonna be comfortable with.
Okay, I didn't realize those regulations applied to driveways as well as roads.
Yeah, whether, in, in your driveway, we'd do the same situation in today's code, where it's so long, that's, that, that was something that came up last year, so.
Made in my existence, my life.
There's some mighty long driveways down there.
As narrow as possible, one power, one way.
You guys are gonna have to have a rest stop at our house. Okay, and then, I guess the other question I have is, in looking at it, what you've proposed back here?
Yep.
Is that, this looks to me like it's gonna be a barn or some type of...
A barn, yep.
And I'm just interested in the type of traffic that you're anticipating over that. Residential traffic, or, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and by?
Nothing public.
Nothing public, now, in terms of, what about equipment that might be coming back and forth?
I brought everything that, yeah, that's why we're keeping a front barn.
Okay. Uh, and then, I, I'm just, my, yeah. My observation is, just in looking, having looked at this, is unfortunately, but given the topography and everything that's here, is the way the, the road and the driveway are situated is, it's the maximum burden on both the butters that you could possibly have. And, and I understand the reason for it, and I understand not wanting to come through here, but, and we can talk more about this separately, but I would ask that you consider maybe how this turn, this turns right at the house, is maybe having this sort of head down a little bit sooner away from the house. Which is something to consider, and something for us to, to talk about, 'cause based on what you were describing, it sounds like it wouldn't interfere with the engineering piece of it. It, it may divide up the field a little bit more, um, but it sounds like you may be planning on maybe hanging, I don't know. What are you planning to do on the side of the driveway?
Hey, well, yeah, hey, on both sides.
So is Charlie doing it? Charlie does it for you too, so?
His job would just get a little harder.
Yeah.
He likes the challenge.
Yeah, we can work on something like that.
Yeah, and we can, we can keep talking about that, but if...
Unless the lanes keep, um, playing us together, it could be a little easier to see, you know.
Yes. Yeah, and that's just, as I look at it, I mean, it's, it's a nice line that we pulled together there, but I think, you know, something could be equal to stopping coming.
Yeah, Elizabeth, you're concerned about light and sound going by the house?
It is, um, I mean, it's, it's funny, because this is an old photograph. Uh, I think Kathleen, you may have a better sense too, because I think your trees are, are pretty small here, but, um, I mean, I think that this was here before the Kennedys moved in. I believe it would be before we moved in, which was six years ago. But visually, here, it looks like a, a pretty good distance, but I think it's 20 or 30 feet, and it's...
Well, and, and we would, we would preserve, uh, um, all the trees that are...
Yeah, I know, there's some...
I mean, a lot of the trees are over on our land, and obviously, quite a bit of planted trees that you guys did.
Yeah.
Which, you know, we're looking at it, and we're like, oh, I don't know, which way are they, you know, they're, we're on our land. But, we're gonna preserve everything that's there, 'cause you guys have kinda planted yourself in a natural buffer.
Yeah, and that was done with, with Mr. Hurley. He actually thought the property went over to here.
More there, right.
That when we had discussions with him, this is where he felt the property ended, at the, at the, um...
Yeah, it pretty much goes right into the stone wall that goes in the back there, that's the trustees and, you know, protecting something.
No, it's good to see it visually, but I think we were, all of us were under the impression originally that it was back here, you know, that it ran out that way.
If we can, maybe sweep it a little more, and then add our buffers in here, you know, so that the lights...
And it's headlights and it's noise and, and just dog, and I assume you'll be driving slowly anyways, but...
I drive very fast. Getting ready.
Well, it's hilarious. It's funny though, too, because I think Kathleen has experienced this too, is that sometimes it's not even the homeowners, it's the UPS truck coming in or whatever, and...
So is the UPS truck.
People don't necessarily appreciate what's, what's there, so, you know, we may all be in agreement on how to treat it, but I just wanna make sure that anybody else who's on the property, um, can traverse it safely. I think I'll have plenty of conversation if you guys go forward, but I think for the board's purposes, those are...
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Kathleen, I don't know your last name, do you wanna say anything? Kathleen Small, do you wanna say anything?
I do have one question, if you don't mind. Only because this is the first I've been involved in this, and I'm Kathleen Small, 259 High Road.
And you own that house?
We own this one.
Yep.
I'm just wondering, is this, this is it for homes, right? You're not going to put anything?
Yeah, yep. There's a restrictive covenant to replace, um, the remaining 11 or any acre parcel that's ours.
We'll put a covenant on?
For the, yeah. That's what we agreed to way back, which we can do. And also, there's covenant on the front barn not to be torn down and demolished. And then for our parcel, there's no covenants on the one acre.
Middle, middle.
Yeah.
Okay. I have another thought, and you may, you may have thoughts on it too, Kathleen, is that, um, and this was mentioned, I think, early on, about, um, that this property was all one contiguous property originally, and when Mr. Hurley subdivided it in the early 2000s, he placed restrictive covenants on the Small's lot, our lot, and the Kennedy's lot. Some of them had to do, really, with construction in the early phases. It was a certain amount of time that homes had to be constructed once you broke ground, and a couple of other things to make sure he wasn't looking at construction for the next 10 years. Um, but then there's some other restrictive covenants too, um, things like no chain, chain link fences, and a cou, other things that, again, you're probably planning on doing anyways, but, um, particularly where there's this lot that potentially could be sold to somebody else, I would like to talk a little bit more about potentially extending those, some of those restrictive covenants to all of the properties, to protect us all. And I think it goes to your earlier point about maintaining the integrity and the character of the neighborhood, so that we all sort of stay on the same page.
I think some of the covenants we probably wouldn't want on, on our personal one. Like, for instance, can't have an ATV, might have an ATV.
Correct, yeah, up, up for discussion, but I think...
But, you know, certain, certain parts, but I believe, yeah, we can convey it further along, uh, with this. You know, but I can't remember where exactly they were, but the ones that were major and important, I think we can.
Could you shop you that I have coffee with me that I can take?
I have several cups.
No.
But, yeah, there was, there was, was there fencing restrictions?
I was gonna say, what about fence, there's, there is...
It's chain, no building fence, very much.
Oh, so you put like the fence that, you know, like the western fences, if you want to, or?
Yeah. Must have, starting around...
But I don't, I don't wanna look at anything like that either.
Right, and I'm just thinking that may be beneficial to all of us, particularly...
No, because we need to drive by it, and, um, yeah, and the Kennedy's will, I don't know.
Right.
Right. Can you sell a home to somebody like that?
Kathleen, is that all from you?
Yeah.
Welcome. You wanna respond to any of that, or are you okay?
You heard it.
Um, then I think, any board member have anything else to question?
No.
Well, I guess our...
Nobody see the plan.
Our comment to you is have at it, and bring us back a plan.
We'll have a site visit, I assume.
Yeah, we'll have a site visit.
Site visit.
But after you talk to Nate.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that get that ironed out, okay? All right?
Tell what you guys have to read.
We have other, uh, like, pers, personal business. No, we just have issues of, we have, uh...
Just two more minutes.
You can stick around if...
You want you two more minutes, we have, we have ongoing business, the master plan and update of 40B site application.
John.
John, John, John.
John, stop.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it, good luck. And Hank, good luck to you. Three weeks old, you gotta be kidding me. Wow. Okay, uh, so let's have a quick discussion about the master plan. Prepare, our, our meeting is next Wednesday. And Martha and I talked to Roberta today and got a preliminary, uh, discussion with her about what an agenda might look like for that event. We're looking at it from being from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock. And for those who are watching on television, uh, this is next Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock, and we have a master plan update with our master plan committee, and the, the, the public is entirely welcome. One of the major things, which if you, uh, may have remembered both from town meeting, that we, uh, uh, put out a survey that a large number of residents have responded to, and we'll have the results of that survey, along with a summary of where the process is at this point in time, where we've been, the number of people we've talked to in terms of the business community, the residential community, uh, focus groups, et cetera, and then where we'll be going, uh, in the next three or four months. So, we, uh, look forward to having a lot of people there. Martha, do you wanna add anything else, yeah, you, you do, do you?
I do. No, I think you covered it.
Yeah. So I think we, we all need to be there, I think, if we can.
Right.
Unless you have a conflict.
Roberta's gonna give, as John said, a presentation, just kind of summarizing the, the, the survey results and where we are now. Kristen will be there to discuss some of the coastal resiliency, um, aspects, and we'll give updates on some of the other elements as we can. And then, the second portion of it will really be given over to, to land use, and maybe some group discussions, and then coming back together.
We're, we're gonna have the eight or nine maps. If you remember, maybe two months ago, we had a whole bunch of land use maps and, uh, water utility maps and things on this table here. We'll have them on boards all around the room, so that as people come in, they can kind of look at these things and get themselves engaged in some of, in some of the information, and go into a meeting after that, so.
I got some, I blew up some of the inundation forecast maps, um, that are not complete, because Woods Hole kinda made believe that Little River didn't keep flowing, which it does. So there, it's worse than what we're showing, but I've blown them up to size that you can actually read. Do you want them to, what up on the wall? Someone, or one of them?
Well, Kristen may be bringing some of that as well, so.
Oh, okay.
If I could touch base with you early next week.
I'll touch with her, touch base with her.
Coordinate that with Kristen, I think we wouldn't wanna have stuff out there that is potentially erroneous, like you've just indicated.
That's the problem I have with it.
That just scares people.
It, it, well, no, it's, it's, it's worse, it's going to be worse than the map shows.
Oh, it's, oh.
We're not scaring them, no. Oh, no, it's the other way around.
All right, well, then...
I mean, it was done with, for a specific reason, which wasn't bad, but as, as users, it has...
Well, I would coordinate that with Kristen and...
I'll work that out with Kristen, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's an important thing to talk about, I mean, the whole vulnerability analysis is really...
She, if she brings a slideshow, she may very well have that. But this is something that if she's just handing out the 8 and 1/11s, this is way easier.
Well, she, she, she may have, the poster may be printed by then, so she may have that with her.
She may have, yeah.
So let's, let's talk about it on, on Monday.
Yeah.
And then, uh, there'll be something, I think, said about transportation, you guys had a meeting this morning.
We had a meeting, yeah.
And, uh, maybe, uh, Tony will be able to digest some of that into a, here are the issues. I'm not sure, you think guys are, are there yet?
I'm sorry?
Are you there, that you think you have, here are the five major issues in the town, or maybe not? I mean, well, then we...
Close.
Yeah, I mean, we, we covered a lot of ground today, but he may be...
It was mostly, it was mostly inventory?
I didn't see any nails get hammered down.
It was mostly inventory?
Well, we identified some issues, but I don't know if we prioritize.
Okay, all right.
So I'll talk to him and see what he feels.
Talk to him about how he'd like to do it.
Yeah.
And then, I'm not sure if we have other meetings of that group, or we then have to reconvene the master plan committee. Our target is to have the product done by September, October, is that right?
Right, right.
And, um, I've, on, on, one of the ones I'm working on, which is the community facilities section, we have a good deal of work that has been done, but it's got a, it's been done by five individuals, and so now we have to fuse it together into a document that makes sense, but, um, there's nothing glaring that's jumping out at that one either, so. And, well, we did talk about adding a section in the community facilities, though, about communications, which I think makes sense, um, because it was such an important issue. When, um, COG did their analysis, when they did all their interviews, the, one of the most important issues to all the people was communication from the town to the, uh, excuse me, from the town officials.
From government to the populace, yeah.
To the populace. And so I, and that's never really been articulated like that before in the master plan, so I think maybe we wanna add a, a little section there at the end. About how we, how we flag that as an issue and talk about possible remediations, and that's just an initial thing we just began to talk about with Roberta.
I think that's really important to get that in there.
Yeah, I do too.
Because we've had some calamities in recent years as a result of exactly that.
Right. So, uh, hopefully we can all be here, um, and hopefully we have good attendance. Next Wednesday, for those of you who are watching. 40B, anything, well, we have the meeting next Tuesday.
Uh, right, right, that, that was the main reason I put this on here, just to remind everybody that, that the applicant will be making a presentation to the selectman next Tuesday. And, um, I don't know if all of you had a chance to, to check out the link to see if you could actually access the files or not. I do have the one hard copy in my office, if anybody wants to take a look at that, and Ellen has one in her office as well.
The difficulty is, I, I've done the Dropbox thing, and it just is laborious. Because you've gotta do each item, and each item, and it just, nothing hangs together, but that's...
Well, they organized it as, in, basically, as one tab from the binder as each file for the Dropbox, so it is cumbersome.
Yeah, but is, I didn't, I don't remember, were there links to, to space places other than this? This is the, what you just described, one...
Oh, you printed it out?
I printed it out one at a time, yeah.
Yeah, so if you printed...
Is there something beyond that that I should chase?
No.
No, that's it.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, if anyone wants to copy this, they're welcome to.
That's a great idea. May, could you take the ten up, copy it?
I've got some duplications in here, where I lost track of where I was, and that...
Yeah, I can do that, if you, if you want me to do it in color, um, my printer is really slow, so...
What is the copier color?
The main copier's not, it's black and white, so...
Really, you have no color?
No.
Uh, and just as, Martha and I have, uh, talked to Paul about the application as well as others, and, um, you know, we have our own individual concerns about it, the, the major issue that you should just know about is that their consultant is very well respected in the industry. I know about them, I've worked with them in, in, in other instances when I was at the city of Austin, but, uh, they're an offshoot of a company called Stockard and Engler. They were the original 40B affordable housing people out of Cambridge, and they're very well respected. On the other hand, I do have some concerns about the fact that the developer has only built 12 single-family homes. So...
Who's the developer?
Yeah, who's the developer?
Isn't it?
That's scary.
And, and has never done anything, obviously, this complex, so I don't, I'm not sure what, what that means. Uh, the state usually has the ability to override a lot of things. We're not, we're not a permitting agent here, but 12 single-family homes is an issue for me.
Right, my understanding is that, that's part of what the state is reviewing with the site approval application, is, is the applicant's ability to actually successfully do the project. So we'll be gathering comments from, you know, the various boards to put into a comment letter, which will go from the selectman's office to the, uh, to Mass Housing, um, by the 16th of July. So we hope to have that letter ready for the selectman to review at their meeting on July 12th. And there will be a training, um, a date has not been set yet, but, but Paul had offered to do a 40B training. The key players for that really are the ZBA, so it's gonna have to meet with their, meet their schedule.
Yeah, I'll be at that. Was it set for, uh, July 30th, was it that late, or June 30th?
Um, I think, yeah, I think June 30th is, is the tentative date, but I, I haven't heard whether all the ZBA meetings can...
I think that's been finalized.
Okay.
Yeah.
So anybody else, I think, would be welcome to, to come to that.
So you're gonna let us know when and where?
Yeah.
Diane?
I think that'd be interesting.
Uh, new, any, any questions about the 40B? Everybody know what's, where it is? Okay, updates from the board of selectmen, well?
And did you wanna...
Oh, yeah. You were all given, um, this is new business, uh, information about the Senate Bill 2144, an act promoting planning and development of sustainable communities, which is, would look at land use issues and zoning issues, and it's gonna be before the Senate tomorrow for its first hearing. APA, American Planning Association, AICP, has strongly endorsed it, Metropolitan Area Planning Council has endorsed it. So, we have prepared this letter that basically asks for, uh, the Senator, Tarr, uh, to take a look at it, we urge his support. So we'd like you to take a look at this letter and see if you, oh, I see, I've done it in two different ways.
Yeah.
So I've done it in two different ways, but you look at this way, one is signed by me, and the other is signed by all of us. So I've done it in two different ways, but you look at this way. One is signed by me, and the other is signed by all of us, and we can do it either way. And I actually have a preference for signed by all of us, because I think it's more powerful.
I think it's more effective.
Don't you?
Yeah.
Is the substance the same?
The letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's exactly the same letter. And so here's the, basically a summary of the. But I think it has more power, and I, this, this is something that planning agencies and towns have been working on for a long, long time, and I think it's, I don't know if it has a shot or not.
Yeah, I don't know. I think this one may have a better shot than some of the, than some of the previous attempts. There have been, you know, some people working very, very long and hard on it. It was discussed a little bit at the CPTC conference in, in March. So we'll see what happens.
Well, do you want to go that way? Everybody okay with it? If it is, we'll start signing it.
Do you want to take a vote? Of support?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Uh, let's have a, a motion. Let's have a motion.
I move that to accept.
Excuse me.
I move.
To send the letter of support.
To send, that this board send a letter of support to Senator Bruce Tar regarding Senate Bill S 2144 regarding an act promoting the planning and development of sustainable communities.
Oh, thank you. And can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion about?
Yeah, I'd really like to finish reading this before I vote on something. I really hate voting on things I haven't read, much less had time to think about. I never knew about vesting. Eight years. I never heard that before.
But I think having things like statutory for site plan review and minor subdivisions, I think, I think both of those will be very helpful, because right now, site plan review is not a statutory.
Also, they're looking at the ANRs.
Right.
And trying to reduce, make them a little more, a little more difficult. And the, the other thing which I like is actually make, changing the special permit from a super majority.
And it's interesting, changing zoning also, zoning acceptance from super majority, or, you know, from two-thirds to a simple majority.
I think, I think that makes sense.
I'm okay.
Okay, any, any other comments or thoughts? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Does Peter sign? Peter signs?
Yeah.
You just fax this to him?
I'll email it.
Or email it?
Yeah, scan and email it.
It's quite a signature, doctor.
It's getting better and better.
Okay, so the Board of Selectmen meets next Tuesday on the 40B, but they're also meeting on something else.
Not Tuesday. If you're thinking about the NBC.
NBC.
28th.
Oh, the 28th?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, well, that was, that was, that was.
Okay.
Revised.
Okay, so. Okay, so that's really the major issue out of the Selectmen right now. MVPC, there's really nothing, because they have not met since we met, except that, as I indicated the last time, this session with Jay Ash is next Wednesday. If anybody has an interest in going to it, it's June 20, no, two weekends.
23rd.
23rd.
Right, morning of the 23rd.
It's for three hours. It's at Essex, Northern Essex Community College.
In the usual room.
In the usual room.
Have they, have they narrowed down any list of candidates for?
They have started the process of interviewing. This is about Dennis DiZoglio, who is leaving after, I guess, 10 years, eight or 10, as the director is, I think, retiring.
He's retiring.
I think he's retiring in November, and so they started a search for his replacement. I do know that the current chairman of the board is, who's an attorney, Richard Byers, who represents Andover, is one of the candidates, but I don't know if they've really started any active, no, they haven't, because they're still talking about hiring what kind of a firm to do the recruiting for them, so. Conservation Commission, John, anything?
Man, same old.
Same old.
Little junk, yeah.
ZBA, busy?
Uh, no meetings since our last meeting, so there's nothing to report on that. We do have a meeting, joint meeting tomorrow night.
Right. Do we want to discuss now, or we are now scheduled to meet on the 8th, 16, 20, 23rd?
22nd.
22nd. About whether or not we want to have one meeting in June, in July and August, or do we want to have two meetings in each of the months?
Well, I know that Joyce Macheros had requested to be on the agenda for June 22nd for the McLeod of ANRs. I'm waiting for confirmation on that, but since she asked to be on it on.
Is that the law line adjustment that we looked at?
But June 22nd is the date that KV is supposed to come back in. Is it July?
July something, yeah.
July 20th, so we need to keep that one.
So that one we have to keep, and we then should keep the, so maybe we don't meet in early June. We can make that decision next on.
Right, so maybe we.
July.
Maybe.
It would be July 6th, which is.
July 6th, which is right near.
It's right after the 4th.
Right after the, right after the 4th.
Right, I know, so smart.
Very quick here. So maybe we would look at skipping that meeting. I, I, let's think about it. I don't think we have to decide now, but I think everybody maybe would like a little bit of a break. We have, and then also we have to fit in the master plan stuff. Is that your Siri?
I don't know what it is. I thought I had a female Siri.
I have a motion. I, I, excuse us, but may I have a motion to?
Yeah, so move.
To so move the meeting? And there's a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.